To the Westford School Committee meeting of February 8, 2021. This is an off week meeting. We were kind of broadcasting these as Budget Mondays. Because we will be missing our regular business meeting next Monday due to the holiday break. We will be doing kind of, gosh, I hate to use the word, a hybrid meeting tonight with some regular business and also some budget discussion. So we're going to start with our regular business. Per our normal practice, if you would like to make a comment, you can complete the air table form. The air table form allows you to request to speak live, or it allows you to leave a written comment. Please make note of the fact that written comments are also part of the public record for this meeting. The air table form has been updated to reflect that, and you will see that notice, and the agenda has been updated accordingly. So please remember that anything posted in written format in the air table is part of the public record of this meeting, and that is in accordance also with the practice of select board and other public boards in town. All right, I think that's everything. Since this is a Monday, an off Monday, we're not going to be doing our informational updates, and we're just going to launch into business. And I believe the first topic goes to you, Bill, and it's the job description.
Yes, representing and bringing back to you the job description that we presented at the last meeting. Hopefully you've had a chance to view it. Once again, this job description will allow us to take our current assistant principals and our current special education student support leaders and blend them. In other words, we will now take six different positions and combine them such that each elementary school will have a full-time assistant principal. And if you recall, the incremental cost of that is a little over $7,000. But that will mean each position in each elementary school will be responsible for leadership tasks, but also student support duties, job responsibilities. We think, and very strongly think, as you know, that this will provide greater consistency, greater focus on a smaller number of students. That's very important. We will get to know the students a little bit better, these six positions. And once again, for the public and for the boards and committees, that we are not increasing any personnel, we're just combining two positions into essentially a singular position with a job description that has two different responsibilities.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from the committee? I know we've seen this previously. Avery.
So I said on Facebook today that I would ask this question. There was some discussion as to the qualifications of the six people currently in these positions. I did state that those six are qualified, and I assumed, but I wanted to confirm, that they would be extended, those positions, and there would be no posting for these positions.
That's correct, and they all do possess the adequate qualifications.
Thanks again. That was just a clarification for the discussion.
Thank you for that.
We do have a request from the public of a parent from the CPAC, Danielle Thompson, who has requested to speak live. So if we could set Danielle up so she can ask her question regarding this topic, that I believe there are also some written comments along the same lines, and I know you did just, you know, address the qualifications, Bill, but if you could speak specifically, I guess the job description suggests that a strong understanding of special education is required. So I guess maybe if you can elaborate on how that's assessed and how that's been being assessed and applied in this situation.
Sure. Well, we know that the student support leaders come to this position from that special education orientation. So there is essentially no learning curve for them. The learning curve applies to those assistant principals, current assistant principals, who oftentimes sit in on certain meetings and team meetings and will receive some significant professional development. I know Courtney has talked repeatedly since last year and suggested certain professional development that they will obtain, because that's where I think the bulk of our training with the merger of these two positions needs to lie. You know, all of them have leadership skills, or they wouldn't be in the positions that they're in. But we want to make sure that the current assistant principals, who will now take on the role of student support leaders also as part of their responsibilities, will certainly receive strong and robust professional development. Courtney, if I may, could I defer to Courtney, and she can address this?
Sure. So I think you stated it correctly. I mean, when we're looking at the job description, we're looking at the range of skills that we're hoping that each one of our staff members will possess. I do know that our current administrative crew that we have, the six individuals at the elementary level, are all certified by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, either with principal, assistant principal certification, and/or special education director licensures. We're not, so we will work with each one to make sure that they have the skill set that's necessary to chair the team meetings. The meetings that our student support leaders currently chair mostly include the eligibility meetings. So whether it's an initial evaluation, a three-year evaluation, there are some students who do have student support leaders at each one of those team meetings, but that's not always the case. When you are looking at a cycle of eligibility, it's every three years. And so there are two annual review meetings that occur between the time of those eligibility meetings, and typically those are chaired by the special education liaison. We are fortunate that our building administration has a very strong interest in the students and all of the students, and it is quite rare that an administrator isn't at one of those team meetings. But each of our liaisons have been trained to go ahead and do their own annual review meetings. At those meetings, they are there representing the district, talking about a student's current performance, talking about recommendations, and have full authority to make the appropriate recommendations for their students. So they do have that training.
There are some other comments. They are lengthy. I can't read all of them, but one question that I think I've heard asked before and would, I think, be helpful to clarify is, is there any concern or complication about how this combines student discipline and special education services into a single role?
I don't think so. It might even strengthen it even more. You know, the challenge that we always have with a student discipline issue is to, you know, pump the brakes, make sure that that student understands exactly what is happening, whether they are the aggressor or quite possibly the target in any individual case. Whenever a student who is on an IEP or a 504 gets to the point where they might have a pattern of discipline issues, the obligation is to share it with the special education team. So that's quite seamless right there, and we would have to conduct a manifestation determination meeting if something, if a student were to be suspended for more than 10 days. That typically does not occur at the elementary level. It might have occurred at least once in my time here at the elementary level, but it's not something that typically happens. And, you know, I also want to emphasize that the principal doesn't go away in this role. So right now, we're talking about the strength of having two administrators per building, and oftentimes they will tag-team each other when it comes to either discipline or maybe another challenging case. And one of those reasons is because the assistant principal is just simply not there. If they're only in two and a half days a week, we can't hit the pause button on something that needs follow-through. So I would say that the two of them are going to have a pretty strong relationship in understanding who's going to be handling each case.
Are there other questions for the committee? I think Valerie.
This, I mean, just kind of a quick question. I don't, I noticed that it has this position reports to two people. Do you see any issues with that, or have you worked with having, I mean, have you, has anyone thought through what, any complications that might come from having two bosses?
Well, I wouldn't look at it as, we have building-based management, and so quite, you know, the building principal is the one that is in charge of everybody that works in their school, including the assistant principal. My role in that will be part of the evaluation process, because so much of the, half of the responsibilities are going to be around special education. That isn't anything different than what we currently do with other staff members that we share, whether they're the curriculum coordinators and/or the current student support leaders. So there's always some kind of a collaboration. You know, I wouldn't evaluate one of my current student support leaders without having the input or checking in with the building principal and vice versa. So I don't think that that is going to be an issue at all. I think it'll give like a nice broad viewpoint of the whole job description.
Thanks. I do have another question. I went back and watched the meeting where you gave the full presentation last year. I think it was like February 3rd or something. And a lot of it was about the timing of professional development. So I apologize if this has been answered, and I know obviously COVID disrupted that, and I also know that every day this school year has felt like a crisis. But I was just curious if any of that professional development has started this current year or what the status of that looks like.
Yes, we did actually start with professional development last spring and opened it up to both general education and special education administrators on the elementary level. And this was around specific learning disabilities, which is one of the most difficult eligibility meetings to chair, is understanding what constitutes a specific learning disability and what would be the recommendation for specially-designed instruction. So that was offered with two different sessions, and we're going to have some follow-up conversations around that as well. We also had extensive civil rights training this year, a couple hours with attorney Michael Joyce in the fall, and that kind of hits the discipline piece. There was a lot that was certainly addressed in terms of special education and 504 students and what our obligation is there. And then we most recently had 504 training. So moving forward, we're really going to get into a lot of the special education, how to chair a meeting, having difficult conversations, which we do a lot on the building, whether you're, you know, dealing with a discipline issue, or whether it's special education or just anything. Some conversations can be challenging. So how can you navigate those in a respectful manner and making sure that we keep the student always in the forefront of our conversations? So we are going to take advantage of some Wednesday afternoons and get some, a good training schedule in place. And then moving forward, it's not going to be, okay, we're done. It'll be constant coaching and collaboration. Some might need more than others. Some might be looking at it more from the building principal perspective, and others might be gravitating towards me for a little bit more guidance. You know, we go through this often when we have a turnover in student support leaders, which we do every several years, and so sometimes the phone rings every day, and that's okay, because that's what we want. The goal isn't to always have the correct answer or always be the one that has the correct answer, but how can we get the right answer to that particular situation?
One more, Valerie?
Sorry.
I see the hand.
I was curious and kind of drawn to, when I was reading the job description, the phrase about, like, maybe deemed, like, alternatives that may be deemed appropriate or acceptable by the superintendent. This may be a question for our HR director, but I was just curious if that was kind of typical for school positions or this level of position to just kind of have that subjectivity and flexibility in it.
Right. So I used to work for a superintendent that used to call those opportunities and would say, Courtney, I have an opportunity for you today. So yes, you know, whatever is needed on behalf of the district, certainly we can't capture everything within those bullets. That is the spirit of the person that we are looking to place into that position, and some of the tasks that we know that they are going to face, but there are still some unknowns. And so if opportunities arrive that the superintendent deems appropriate, then they will be addressed.
Let me just clarify that it sounded like your answer was more about job responsibilities, but this was up in the qualifications bullet section. So it almost makes it feel less black and white about what qualifications are needed for this position.
Oh, okay. So, right. So we're looking for definitely assistant principal, special education director certification. So either one of those would be appropriate for the position. I believe that's where we were going with that top bullet.
Is that kind of open-ended, normal, typical for this?
It is. Oftentimes in job descriptions, Valerie, you'll see any or all other qualifications that may be deemed pertinent to the position, just to provide some flexibility. So, you know, for example, if suppose this were an open job and someone who has worked for 10 years in the special education department of education may not necessarily meet the qualifications exactly, but may have absolutely all of the skills necessary. So, you know, this is where you need to leave yourself with just a little bit of flexibility.
So not so much a question, but a comment. Having now sat with this for a year, and I'm sure Courtney remembers my 43 questions from last year, I will never forget that it was 43 questions. And then also having toured and spoken with our preschool staff who are currently in our pre-K to two buildings. I can understand the reservations, change is hard. I can understand being concerned that there's so many legalities, and you're talking about our kids here, and we want to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. But where this lands for me is if you want true integration, then you need everyone in the building to speak the language of special education. And adding another professional at the administrative level who not only speaks the language of administration, but speaks the language of special education, makes it far less likely that integrating children with needs will become an afterthought. They will always be involved in leadership discussions. They will always be involved, especially when you're talking about discipline, because the assistant principals very often are. They will already have the working knowledge of the needs that are in their building. So again, as much as I understand that this is a change, and we talked about it last year, it got put on pause, it got brought back. To me, it offers us a unique opportunity to walk the walk when we're talking about integrating our kids into the relation. So I just wanted to share that that was personally where I feel about everything else.
That's a very good insight into that position, Alicia. Thank you.
And Alicia, you know, I was one that thought, are we going to keep this on pause, given where we are right now? And it wasn't until I had my first meeting with the elementary principals that I got excited about it again. You know, I was still feeling in that first conversation, it's October, I was still underwater since March, and when they started speaking about it so passionately, then that's where I'm like, well, can't turn back now, so we've got to keep going forward.
I know we had had a parent who requested to speak live on this, and she wasn't present before. Chris, do we have Danielle Thompson on the line now? Great. All right. Hello, Danielle, welcome.
Thank you, guys. I apologize. I came in at 10 past, and I didn't realize you were jumping so quick to this, so I appreciate it.
No worries. If you go through the official thing and state your name and address, and then give us your public comment.
Absolutely. So it's Danielle Thompson for Sunny Meadow Lane. And to be honest, I have a lot of comments on this, but in order to honor the time here, as the co-chair of the CPAC, which, you know, Massachusetts state law assigns us an advisory and participatory function, as an advisor to the school committee on matters that pertain to education of students with disabilities. The fact that we have not had any current conversations in over a year on this topic with the CPAC directly, and where we had no involvement in the job description, I know I submitted some questions, but we have many questions currently happening at the moment. And I would like to request a postponement on the vote of the job description tonight so that we're able to involve the CPAC and able to voice our input and possible additions to the job description if possible. Thank you.
Well, one of our first meetings that we did have, Kathy Healy Norton did bring up the position and wanted to know if we're going to move forward, was quite excited about, you know, where we were at that point. I did not know where we were going to go, but certainly I wouldn't say that it hasn't been, it hasn't been there. I didn't get any feedback that the committee was feeling differently than they had last year, so I'm sorry.
We have been entirely new board this year, as of June or July of 2020, and, or was it June or July? Some point in there. But either way, we have not had the opportunity to be included in the conversation, in the current conversation. And like you said, we didn't know where we were going with this, and now we have a full job description without any current communication with the CPAC community or board. So I am kindly requesting a postponement on the vote tonight in order to have those conversations.
Thank you for the comment. Danielle, I appreciate the input. Please note, there was certainly no intent to not discuss this openly. It's been discussed for a year. Alicia referenced the 43 questions from last year. And while I know that the executive board of the CPAC may have changed, I know, I believe all of you were members at that time last year. So I don't think there was certainly any intent to not have an active discussion again. This was raised in our agenda last week, and we decided not to vote on it last week because it was the first time it was coming back before us, and so we thought it should be at a subsequent meeting, and that would be tonight. So just to clarify that timeline for you, nothing's.
I appreciate that.
That way.
And I take responsibility for not being at last week's meeting. I know we had our own CPAC meeting last week as well, so we were focused there. So that is on me for missing that. But again, you know, the communication between last year, it's a whole year, you know what I'm saying? So I know it was not intentional, but I just want to bring it into awareness and ask for that consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bill, did you have further?
Yep. Well, I do think there has been considerable conversation. I think if, and I would recommend that you approve it tonight so we can move on with our planning, but that would certainly be with the understanding that we will meet with CPAC and take their input. I, you know, the job description is quite comprehensive, so I'm not sure what more could be in there, but we will certainly fulfill the mission of meeting with the CPAC. Yeah, there was, as you said, there was absolutely no intent in terms of to pass by them at all. It's just that we've been talking about this for a long time. It was just on the shelf. We kind of took it off and dusted it off again to bring it back for this year. So I think you know that we will certainly involve the CPAC in a conversation.
It is disheartening to not have the opportunity to make some additions to that job description. to that job description. And I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I guess my, my question would be Danielle, what specific modifications that you would suggest tonight to that, that job description?
Yeah. I mean, initially just the, even the title, you know, it kind of omits anything other than just the general assistant principal role. Where this is combining the student support leader role. So I think it should have a unique description to the title so that it's not misleading. You know, just right off the bat, it kind of seems like the special education piece was just kind of like, you know, just slipped in the back of the folder there, for lack of better terms. You know, the experience in special education is not a necessity. It's only like a strong understanding being required there. There is a lot of, you know, legalities that come along with chairing that role. And if it's not necessarily a passion or interest or full experience in that role, then it could be a detriment to the students, the families and the school. You know, having the requirement, say, in eligibility meetings, I think that's a little misleading. There are students who have student support leaders present for annual assessments, follow-up meetings, team meetings, team meetings requested by parents that really need to be efficient and effective in order to not cause further time, money and challenges. A student support leader can really make or break how, how that, how that student and how that family and how those services are delivered. You know, the omission of having a strong understanding of or for inclusive classrooms, diversity and equity, special education was kind of left out of there. And out of thirteen responsibilities, right? There is only one out of the thirteen of these that include, that are specifically addressed to special education students and families, where we have an entire position dedicated to, to these responsibilities right now. So those are just a few of my suggestions and comments.
Let me just say that in terms of the title of the position, the reason that is listed as an elementary assistant principal and not commingled with some of the title is because that, that, that is an administrative contract that stands alone and is not subject to collective bargaining in an organized labor group such as unit A, unit B, or so on. And so we want to make sure that we keep those positions as individual administrative contracts. So that's, that's sort of the mechanics of why it is entitled that as an assistant principal. Gloria, I'm not sure if you want anyone, you know, Courtney to address any of those issues that Danielle brought up. I think organically, all of those things that you're looking for, you know, will in fact be present and will happen. It's just I, I think it will need a little bit of time for that to be on display to, to parents and to students. I don't know Courtney, if you want to provide any additional clarification on that?
No, I, I guess, I mean, overall, I'm highly invested in this position being successful. It did come from a special education perspective of how we could have a greater impact at the elementary level. And how we could be inclusive. My focus has always been to make sure that the special ed piece, I mean, quite frankly, if the special ed piece isn't strong, it makes my job more difficult and I wouldn't want to water that down in any way. Building more capacity in our district, I think, is a strength so that you don't have to hit the pause button and go to say, do I need to speak to this person or that person? To have someone be able to speak from a special education perspective is definitely a strength, whether you're dealing with a discipline issue, whether it's an eligibility issue, whether it's just any other concern that might come up. So certainly I continue to be invested in this position. And yeah, that's.
The, thank you. Thank you for the comment Danielle. There, there has been a request from the, the CPAC on the floor. I want to respect that. And their role in the process. If I could hear from other committee members, do you feel comfortable taking a vote this evening? Do you not? I kind of need to see, see some will of the committee here about how to proceed. One, one question I guess I have, it, it sounds like the concerns I'm hearing are, are concerns, are concerns about implementation. And yes, it's being brought forth in the job description, but I, I know for myself personally, I'd be comfortable voting on the job description tonight with, you know, the understanding that CPAC, we hear your concerns and that, you know, we'll encourage further communication and collaboration as this process moves forward so that everyone in the, in the CPAC understands how this transition is going to occur. As I think Alicia said, you know, change is always hard and, and let's continue having discussions about how this is implemented. That would be my impulse. If, if anyone else on the committee feels differently and doesn't think we should take a vote, please speak, speak up if you're not comfortable. Valerie, is that a hand for you'd prefer to wait?
I, I guess I have a question. I just want to understand the timing because I know that this is involved in the budget. So there's a dollar amount assigned to it. I know it's only seven thousand. But so I don't, I don't, and, and we already have the individuals. So I guess I don't understand the downside of waiting on the job description. Like the PD is happening. We can't fully do it officially until we have the money in the budget, which isn't being approved tonight. So is there a downside I'm not seeing?
Well, I think all people, all of the participants here are the, the parties involved are very easy to know if this model is, is going to go forward. And, you know, it, it can't unless the job description is approved. And if every week or two weeks that goes by, we lose a little bit more time in terms of potential professional development and training for them. So we have all intent, all intent to certainly and will meet with the, the CPAC, just so they feel comfortable understanding that we have a lot of time invested in this. We want it to work and it will work. And our, our objective is to improve service levels to children and to their parents.
Sure. And, and I think the other piece is that there's a, a different length in the contract year for each individual. And I know you know, what happened last year when we started going into this direction and then hit the pause button. It impacted some individuals who were already planning around what they needed to do with their children as far as daycare, summer programming and that type of stuff. And it was around the same time where we thought we were moving forward and then a couple, maybe a month and a half into it switched over. So you know, there are six people at the other side of the position who it is their, their job. And, you know, I, I, I understand. I certainly respect Danielle's perspective. She and I have exchanged several emails just in the past couple of weeks. I, I, I wish I would have known that this was going to be an issue and certainly would have tried to address it sooner. I have offered several meeting times to the CPAC between last week and this week and just waiting for a little bit of collaboration to find out when that meeting was going to be. But over the past, I think, two weeks, there's been three offers to meet on different topics, not on this. Danielle is correct. This was not on the agenda. But it really wasn't, like I said, it was, it was, it has been vetted so much. And yes, there is a different committee. But I think that even when school committee turns over each, every couple of years or so. You know, we don't necessarily rewind the conversations as well.
And any other hands, Alicia?
I think we all know I'm the last person to ever say that we shouldn't be looking at something from a CPAC or special education perspective. But we did spend many weeks last year. I personally wasn't in contact with the CPAC membership. At the time I was still on the board. I'm not on the board now. And I think it has been said tonight that this will be an ongoing discussion. Any position is other duties as assigned. And the ongoing conversation will keep going on. And I think there were many questions answered last year, and I'm sure there will be more questions to come. But I think in order to put us in a position where we are moving forward as fast as we can and as diligently as we can with the professional development, I think we approve the position tonight. And I think we continue the conversation with the CPAC.
Okay. Barring, barring no objection from the committee, with all due respect to the CPAC, I would like to call for the vote unless there are any objections. Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the job description for the elementary assistant principal at the pre K to five level, which includes the merger with, with that tradition position, traditionally with the student support leader position. All in favor? Avery? Oh, I'm sorry, second. I need a second. Thank you for the second, Avery.
And say aye.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also in favor. So that is unanimous. Thank you for all the work and planning that has gone into this for a very long time. And absolutely, let's keep the conversation going so that everyone's comfortable during this transition. The next topic on our agenda is the sports alternate floating season. And I believe the superintendent has a recommendation for us.
Yes. If I could just interject something for one moment here before the sports conversation, the forecasts for tomorrow are full of variable snow accumulation amounts. So at some point in this meeting, I'm going to check in with other superintendents. I will do a final check of the forecast and accumulate, expected accumulation totals for tomorrow. And may break away for a few minutes later on in the meeting to send out a message if I think that there should be something other than a normal day. So I just wanted to alert parents to the fact that I am going to be checking to see if we conduct a normal day or if we conduct, for example, a fully remote day, and I would let both staff and parents know. So I apologize for interjecting it that in there, but we've heard everything from three to five inches, four to six inches, six to eight inches and everywhere in between. So.
I thought you were going to announce here and make it breaking news.
Well, I may, I may very well Valerie. I just want to have a little bit more time to see another forecast or two in the next hour. So that's a possibility. Pair recommendation for the fall two floating season that the MIAA constructed and initiated. I wanted to give you a little bit of backdrop. Starting with the winter sports season, as you know, I provided a decision and recommendation that we not participate in basketball and hockey at the time. Because the numbers were escalating, numbers of daily COVID cases being reported. Were rapidly escalating over that period of time. Chris, I don't know if, if you have the slides that you could bring those up, please on the screen. And so when we were in the consideration of what winter sports would run and what would not. I was looking at the daily number of cases of COVID cases and also the seven day average. Alright, since that provides a little bit more normalized view of what is happening over a week's period. So in late November, there were twenty seven hundred cases, a seven day average of twenty seven hundred cases. In early December, forty seven hundred. In early January, sixty two hundred, in fact, a little bit over sixty two hundred. And on some of the individual days, if you recall, those individual day totals were in excess of seven thousand, approaching eight thousand new cases. And so based on that data, that's where I, I made an assessment to not conduct basketball and hockey. Okay. And I think that decision was sound at the time. I still believe that because the number of cases really were quite, quite variable, but escalating. So what did we learn based on the ending of the winter season? Particularly in terms of basketball and hockey. Well, in checking with other dual county league schools, and I asked the athletic director Jeff Bunyan to do this. There was no transmission within basketball or hockey of the COVID virus in the dual county league. Now, some people have said, well, Akken Box Bro closed. Well, that was not due to sports. They, that really did not have anything to do with, with sports transmission. Okay. So they closed, they kind of quarantined for two week period. So that's what we learned. But the data we were trying to use facts and not, not fear. Okay. And so moving forward, Chris, if I can have the It involves cheerleading. There would be no competition. It does involve football. Involves indoor track. Now, we do not have an indoor track facility. And there are no indoor track facilities available to rent right now. So any events would be held outside, okay, weather permitting. And also the sport of volleyball. Now, in deciding and making a decision on do I feel these sports should run? I've looked once again to the trend in the seven day average of COVID cases. Now, please know that I, I sent a memo to the COVID advisory committee and we know they are an excellent, excellent advisory committee. I will say honestly that a number of them expressed concerns about two sports in particular, football and volleyball. Now here's where as the superintendent, I, I look at the data, I look at the advice. I, I look at the issue of when do we bring students back in for classroom instruction? But also when do we bring them in to start resuming other activities? Okay. And can one happen without the other happening simultaneously? So I've looked at the data. COVID data on seven day averages in mid-January was a little over forty six hundred cases, a seven day average. Late January, it had dropped down to about thirty one hundred cases. And in early February, early this month, the seven day average of COVID cases was just down just over two thousand. Okay. So the trend has been moving downward. Chris, could I have the next slide, please? So as I said, the postseason report from basketball and hockey was no transmission. So the session metrics I have applied to the fall two floating season decision. The data on seven day average COVID cases of mid-January to early February. Team transmission information from winter sports season. And the facts that we have, that we have discussed for a couple of months now, that there is really no transmission within the school system. So my decision and certainly I, I will be glad to discuss this with you. And, and if you disagree with me, that's fine. There is no universally right or acceptable answer to people in this pandemic. It just simply isn't. Your opinion is as good as mine, the COVID committee's opinion, anyone else's. I'm just trying to look at the data, look at facts and make a decision. So my decision would be to allow the fall two sports, all of them, the football, volleyball, indoor track, which would be held outdoors and cheerleading. And we have some, I have some other accompanying graphs. Chris, if we could just quickly scroll through those. Here's the Here's the, here's the trend. The yellow line that you see is the seven day average trend line. And so that has dropped significantly since about, oh, I want to say about the 10th of, of January. Right? And you can see right now, it is dropping down around the 2,000 cases, which I presented in a, in a prior slide. As you can see, back on around January 11th, the number, the number of cases for that particular day were almost 7,000. In fact, probably in a little bit in excess of 7, 7,000 cases. And it is, it is dropping. Chris, if I could have the next slide, please? Here's a trend that, that shows the, the seven day average of cases. It shows a seven day average of hospitalizations, okay? Shows on the right, testing and deaths. I'm not so concerned about that, those particular graphs in relation to this discussion. I want to present the, the seven day average that you see here and the hospitalizations, all declining at the present time. Now, yes, we want to continue to see them decline. But I do believe the MIAA has put into place sufficient safety measures to ensure that this fall two season can be conducted safely. And Chris, if I could have one more graph? And I, this is from the weekly Department of Public Health report. Their weekly COVID statistics. As you can see, a little bit down the page, Westford, our, our numbers, fortunately, as a town. These are not specific to the school system, but as a town are, are dropping. The average daily incidents, that is the number of cases per 100,000 population, the percent positivity with respect to testing metrics over the last 14 days, those are lower also. So we've gone from the red zone on the map of the DPH into, back to the yellow zone. Now, does that automatically mean that, oh, it's okay for everything to open up? And no, it doesn't. But it means that things are trending down. We have facts that the transmission in the school system is negligible. We have the facts that the, there was no transmission in basketball or hockey in the dual county league schools. And so when you look at, what is the data that's relevant to making this decision? I've tried to present that data to you. Data being seven day trend in, in cases. We negligible transmission within the school system of COVID in general, and the fact that county schools have reported no transmission in those indoor sports. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, you may have. I believe we have, for the purpose of answering any questions, I believe we have Jeff Bunyan and Jim Antonelli that hopefully will be accessing the meeting also. So be glad to answer, any of us will be glad to answer your questions.
I, I appreciate Jim and Jeff, both of you being here. I guess I'll just ask a preliminary question. Last time, when we had to make this decision in December, and that was very difficult, the superintendent's recommendation was in line with the high school principal and was in line with the advice from the COVID committee. Jim, I guess I just need to put you on the record, what, what's your stand?
I, I support the superintendent's decision this time based on the data. And thank you for asking, Gloria.
I fully, fully expected that was the case, but wanted to be clear.
Oops, Gloria, you've gone on mute.
Sorry, thank you. I also did want to clarify, because I think this did get lost in the discussion last time. The COVID advisory committee is not an official body. It doesn't have official decision-making, it doesn't take votes. It's an advisory committee. It's a group of medical professionals and, and community members who have been joined together by the superintendent to provide him with advice in keeping all of our students safe, in keeping our schools open during a, a really unprecedented time in education. So please, regardless of what happens tonight, regardless of the decision is ma, that is made, the decision that is made is the responsibility of the superintendent and the school committee, and no one else. And I just thought it was fair to clarify that for the public who's watching. Now, I'll, with that clarification, I'll open the floor for questions and comments. Chris?
So I, I suspect my comments would, will mirror what they were a few months ago. If we could rewind the tape, but I don't remember, so I'm going to say them again. I, I guess I'll start by saying, I'm really tired of the COVID spread in this community, in this country. It's frustrating. And we know how to not spread it. Wear a mask, limit your exposure to other people, maintain as much distancing as possible. And we know it's spreading because people aren't doing those things. And I want to focus on the first thing, which is wearing a mask. If we just all wear masks, so we save ourselves so much heartache and frustration and remote learning and everything. So all that said, from what I hear, from what I understand, from what I'm being told, we, I think we can safely play sports with a mask. I go to Market Basket twice a week with a mask. I'm getting within three feet of the guy stocking the, the beans on aisle seven. And I'm only within his three foot vicinity for a few seconds. Is there a risk of that? There is a risk of that. Yep, he could be giving me COVID. But we're both wearing masks. And I, I know, I, I know this isn't necessarily true, but I haven't heard of any cases of masked, two masked people, wearing people, giving each other COVID. I know it happens. But the numbers, if you look at wearing a good two ply mask or better, an N95, are so low if you're both wearing a mask that even with the closer contact, say with football, it's not 15 minutes face to face. It's, 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 you know, there's a momentary close contact, wearing a mask, and then you're separated. And so here's what it comes down to for me. I, I don't know of cases of masked, masked transmission. I know they're out there, but it's not our problem. Our problem is not two people wearing a mask, getting kind of close to each other once in a while on a volleyball court. Our problem is our students are socializing, excuse me, socializing outside of school, outside of sports, maskless, every day, every weekend. And I know this, I know this to be true. And we know they're out there doing, we know you're out there doing it. And I just, it has to stop, you know, like that has to stop. So part of me doesn't want to give sports to students who are doing that. But as we said with the discussion on winter sports, I, well, as I said, I, I'm inclined to allow it, but I also would be interested in the thought of a, of a student contract. I think they have to commit to being safe. And our athletic directors and our, our administrators are focused on student safety so that they can have these sports. I think they need to commit to safety, COVID safety, outside of the sports arena and in their personal lives. And so that's, that, that's the one thing I would ask is if, then we revisit that notion of a student contract, that while they're participating, they're, they're not going maskless around other people. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Sean?
Ditto Chris on the student contract. I, I still think that's a great idea. One of the things that I found eye-opening was the, I don't know, Jeff, I don't know if you put this together for us, but someone had watched a couple tapes from a, a football game in 2019. Was that you, Jeff?
Actually, I, I presented it to you. It was put together by our coach, Coach, Coach Pat Gendron.
Gendron, okay. So Coach Gendron shared with, for those of you who haven't had a chance to look at it, I, I check it out. And it, and it showed that two linemen in football, right? I mean, those are the guys who are lined up directly across from each other. It, throughout a whole game, had less than 10 minutes of actual close contact with each other. So I mean, that, for me, coupled with the fact that this would be played outside, right? It, it just, and, and showing that other, other schools in the area can do this successfully, as evidenced by when we had higher numbers and it appears less transmissions or no transmissions. I'm comfortable with this. It seems to be well thought out and, and supported by what's there. I understand that there's going to be apprehension, and I understand that too. And I empathize with it, but I think at some point, we got to start returning to normalcy. And given the fact that there is a vaccine out, it's, it's time to do that.
Avery?
I'm glad Sean brought up the, the vaccine. So I, I'm struggling with this more than Chris and Sean. Clearly, I find that sports at this time flies in the face of what we're trying to do academically for a small portion of our students. It puts a large number at risk. I'm also very concerned about the risk that our coaches are being put in and their coworkers who may not wish that they are in a more high-risk activity. So I think, I think that there's multiple reasons I have concern. We've also heard from the teachers that they really don't want to be back in the classroom until there's a vaccine for them. So, you know, medically, do we need to wait for sports until there's a vaccine so that our coaches are safe? Because if our coaches are exposed, they're out of school, a lot more students are losing out on learning time. I'd also like to understand, DCL did not have any transmissions. But Jeff, could you speak to quarantines and towns surrounding us and their transmissions and quarantines? Because I think transmission is a very tightly defined, but I think that there were, there were other transmissions.
Sure. First of all, Avery, one of the, one of the things that we look at with our, with our coaches specifically is, as we all know, they will be wearing masks at all times. And our coaches do have the luxury of staying in excess of six feet away from our, from our student athletes. I guess similar to the classroom. So regardless of what's going on, our coaches are six, are six feet away with masks on. So I, I hope that that would answer that or answer that concern maybe that some people may have. With regard to transmissions, there was, there was no transmissions across the DCL in winter sports as a result of basketball and hockey. I also checked, ironically, I was on the phone with Neshoba Tech today and speaking with their athletic director, because we were talking about clearing fields for potential football season, which is going to be another struggle, but we're, you know, prepared to move forward with it. And he told me, you know, again, I asked him what, what's going on there because I haven't communicated with some of the surrounding towns that are not in our conference specifically. And there has been no spreading of any, of, of the COVID-19 amongst any of his teams in the winter or fall. And there was no quarantines for any of the Neshoba Tech teams this winter. So there were quarantines from time to time with some teams out of abundance of caution, like Superintendent Olson said, Akon Box Bro had a two-week shutdown because they were concerned, I think, about travel over the holidays. And that was a district-wide shutdown that that had nothing to do with athletics. So in, in looking at the, the numbers and listening to the superintendent, I just feel, again, as I said back in the winter, and I, I truly want to move forward as the athletic director, my commitment is to make sure I educate all the coaches and the student athletes on all the safety precautions and protocols that we'll have in place. I'll be meeting with all of them. I have a meeting with the coaches, assuming we get a, a positive vote this evening for an approval. I'll be meeting with them on Thursday. Then we'll be meeting with the teams. And again, I think as, as, as Chris said, Chris Sanders, something that he said in the last meeting that really struck me was using, you know, athletics as a lever to make sure that the student athletes are doing the right thing off the field. I would be all for that. If, if, if you look at the first, one of the first paragraphs of the MIA statement, it talks about coaches encouraging their student athletes to, I'll just read, read what they have as far as reminding all the student athletes to giving them mitigation strategies, including distancing, wearing masks, and limiting. So that's something that Principal Antonelli and I have talked about as far as putting something together. And I would love to move forward with that because I, I think it's really, really important that this goes beyond athletics as much as helping these student athletes and students do the right thing. So long-winded answer, but I wanted to follow up on that coaches thing, because that came up last time. And as far as them always being six feet from their student athletes with a mask on at all time to mitigate any risk of contracting the virus.
The last thing I'll say is that we talk a lot about mental health and how the mental health of our students is just deteriorated to a point that I don't think many clinicians, teachers, or parents had seen before. And I believe that the best remedy to that is getting our students back into the classroom. And I, I still, I, I understand that sports is going to benefit if we give them the, the benefit. But to me, we need to get them in the classroom before we start adding the, the other things on because we are here to educate all students safely. So that's all I'll say.
My, my question actually follows on a topic that you just touched on, which relates to our, our staff. Because that was one of the issues that came up in December, that our concern isn't just for the, the safety of the athletes, although of course, that is important. They can also make the choice about this relative risk. But do we feel, because of the large number of staff that are involved in, in coaching a sport like football especially, do we feel that that in any way, if there was a quarantine of the football team, if that involved a, a quarantine of that associated staff, would that compromise the ability to keep Westford Academy open in the hybrid model? And I guess that question goes to Principal Antonelli.
I would say that we've been able to manage different situations this entire school year from the get-go. As you know, we, we, we were going to have some difficulty opening the school, but managed to hire some great people. And if we went into quarantine, folks have been terrific. They have been working from home in, in different situations. And we reached out to a variety of substitutes and have a, a great list of substitutes that would be able to be in the school building while we do live streaming if necessary. So there, there could be some impact, again, but to Jeff's point, his comments about, you know, safe, safe social distancing and the extra sanitize, sanitization, sanitizing that the, the coaches will be doing. I, I think we're going to be okay, Gloria, in regards to having appropriate staff to teach our students on a daily basis.
How, how many staff members are involved in coaching football right now?
There's about six, I'd say. Yep. In a, in a variety of capacities.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Ming Chen, I know I saw your hand.
Trying to unmute. Yeah, so, so definitely, I think playing sports is an impo, important part of the school journey, school. We know that sports can be played safely across the district, not, not only in this district, but also in a lot of schools, also in the clubs. I, I think Avery raised a really good point. If I, when are we going to actually put kids back to school? I have the chance, actually, with some of the school committee members, we visited Blanchard Middle School, Stony Brook Middle School, and then WA. There are, there are some classrooms pretty full, but most of the classroom, they have a lot of empty desks, empty chairs. There are capacity which can be utilized. So um, so I know we there is a union discussion need to be involved, but this property is outside the scope of this discussion. I would encourage that. We not only open the sports, we also need to actually explore how to bring our kids back to school. Whole day instead of half-day or bring more kids back to school.
Um Valerie.
Um, I had a couple of specific questions probably for Jeff. Um, does the, is the indoor track? Indoor, outdoor track um. Uh, using the same, I mean, is that the same place that the football will be, right? That's like the um better, not veterans field.
Trustee.
Thank you.
It, yes, it's, it's the same area we've uh, we, we took uh, we, we did our first clearing of the football field the other day on Saturday. I actually took a walk on the football field around four o'clock and I was very encouraged that uh we had had it all cleared off. And we were just about ready to do uh some sections of the track. And then obviously the snow hit last night, so we're going to regroup, but. It would be in the same area, but they would, they wouldn't be at the same times, uh Valerie, if that's maybe, if that's your question. And because there's no facilities to run and house and actual meat, uh, it's going to be run a little bit differently where there's only if uh, we're just going to get together. Quote-unquote informally for now until we see if maybe we can get some facilities that can house some meats. We want to make sure we, we provide uh an opportunity for those athletes to, to get outside and train with their, you know, friends, classmates and coaches.
Yeah, you're right. My, my question was more like, are they, are, is the whole football team going to be on the same arena as? The track team at the same time and can they appropriately distance? Um, but you answered that with different times.
Yeah, and they actually have modifications. Part of the rules, they're only allowing certain members on the field at a certain time. And it in everything socially distanced, the, the traditional sideline that you might see in football where players are all gathered closely. Uh, they've expanded that box from the ten-yard line on one side to the ten-yard line on the other side. Every two, every two yards, which is six feet, there'll be a a marker where the players will stand to keep them socially distant. Uh, during play and during practice. So I, my, my hats off to the football committee for really thinking through the times uh. When they're not on the field, when they're, when gatherings could take place to mitigate those problems.
And while they do um warm-ups or practices, right, there's like a, a, is there a rule for twenty-five per um half-field?
Yeah, right now there is, there is some discussion amongst the E E A about eliminating that twenty-five and going more to a. You just need to be socially distanced of access to six feet and that decision's pending. So that might be something that might be changing. But again, it's, it's still going to be six feet regardless if there's twenty-five or if they allow a few more. We, we need to make sure these, that all players are, are, you know, are keeping their distance.
And how has um the out-of-season coaching been going? Is that no-contact drills that's been?
Yes, I'm glad you asked. We, we've had eleven sessions. Uh, Coach Jenner and his staff volunteered their time to do the out-of-season coaching. We've had a lot of kids show up uh, getting their, you know, exercise and enjoying, enjoying what they do. It's been a skill-based and uh.
All outside.
Yeah, that, oh yeah, that worked out very, very well. Thank you.
Um, sorry, I have a few more specific ones. Are you, are you planning for spectators at the outdoor ones? I know it says on your pamphlet, it says none for indoor.
Yeah, we're still uh, we're still, we're, we're going to follow the guidelines and the guidance from the E E A. And we'll listen to what they say. And then when I get that information, I'll bring it to Principal Antonelli and Superintendent Olson and make a final decision as well as the D C L members. It's poor, it's my belief that if, if we allowed uh fifty spectators or a hundred spectators, whatever the E E A allows. Uh, we would follow and and we would uh proceed with the same land uh lanyard process we did in the fall. We would assign lanyards accordingly and uh, you know, move forward, which that was very successful in the fall. So. That's, we're set up well for that if depending on how they uh, whatever that decision is.
One, one more sports-specific question about cheer. Um, it said T B D. Based on individual school participation. Can you elaborate a little bit on cheer? Like, is there stunting? And is, are they practicing outdoors as well? And what T B D based on individual school participation meant?
T B D was just because traditionally cheer is a, it's a combination of cheering at events, not just football, it's several events. As well as a competition chair. And where originally competition chair was not allowed, they were only going to be able to cheer at the uh, at-home football games. And uh, T B D was just to make sure that we had the participation level amongst the students if they wanted to do that. You know, but uh, I hope that we can. I've spoke to, I've met with some of the captains. They're, they're excited to do it, even though it's a limited time and. It's only going to be able to cheer at home games. They really want to get back into it and just get outside and cheer and, 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 you know, put forth their school spirit.
And can they practice indoors or is it all outdoors?
They can practice indoors as long as they're socially distant. I'm still going to work through that. Not sure what the best way to do it is, but uh, again, with the education of the coaches and staying six feet away. We'll make that determination that best fits the uh, you know, the the cheer team, but uh. Regardless, we'll be following all those protocols.
I apologize. I didn't have time to go through the specific um guidelines for that, but it sounds like if they're going to do socially distance inside, then you can't really practice stunts that way.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't answer that. Yeah, there's no stunting right now, which is why.
Oh, okay, okay.
Why there's no competitions. However, the E E A is talking about uh allowing some form in of stunting and they're going to give us more guidance on that. Any guidance we receive will just be, you know, discussed accordingly to see what we can do safely, but right now it's no stunting. Sorry, I forgot to answer that question.
That's okay. And then I just have two general questions. One is, did it, did, was there a conversation maybe with COVID Advisory Committee? About um using that, that offering for testing with sports?
I think they, I think there was a question that was asked about it. There are a few districts, Cambridge uh and Lincoln Sudbury were doing some rapid testing. From speaking to them, they, they really didn't feel that it added uh. Any additional level of safety. Uh. So I can't comment on the, the exacts, but it wasn't something that is being uh adopted by a lot of other schools.
Thanks. And last question is, can you talk to the return-to-play guidelines? I don't know if that's something that's been. Um, all along. And I saw that in January, the Massachusetts Academy of Pediatrics put out. A lot of new information about like a gradual return to play if a student athlete tested positive. Um, I just wanted to know if that was being incorporated in each sport.
Absolutely. There, there, there was, the recommendation was made to have at least, well, first of all. In the past, we, we will follow the guidance of the Westford Health Department for all their contact tracing and their uh, and their quarantine, number one. But number two, as far as returning to play, uh, student athletes are required to receive a doctor's note from their physician. That proves their negative test before they can come back. That was never done before. So that's mandatory. Also is at least a mandatory practice that they have to have at least one practice before they can compete in a uh, in a, in a contest. Rather than trying to get someone back so they can play in the game the next day, there has to be at least one practice in between for them to uh, to continue to participate. So we will be adopting that.
Great, thanks. I appreciate that because it sounded like the M I A wasn't officially requiring something, but giving a lot of suggestions in that area. So I'm glad to see that that's on, on the radar. And, and just to kind of share my two cents while I totally sympathize and wish that academics. The, the push for academics was happening at the same time. Um, for me, this discussion, not that, not that winter wasn't hard, but this to me feels. More in a gray area because I would have thought outside is a no-brainer. Um, but then football is still categorized as high-risk according to the E E A. So um, it, it's, it's really tough. I think this particular combination of sports, volleyball and football are still high-risk. Listed in the E E A categories, um, but. I really, I really lean towards outdoor with masks should be. Something we can do.
Volleyball is moderate risk, just.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you.
Um, I actually had a, a sports-specific question um on volleyball. And I know I, I sent this through email, but I know there was definitely some confusion based on a lot of schools did volleyball in the fall. And there was this question of something called the COVID line and whether players would be um socially distanced, kind of blocking and hitting off the net. So if you can just clarify that, Jeff, going forward, so we know what the rules are now. And also if you know, speak to whether any of the schools who did play volleyball inside in the fall. Had difficulties with either transmission or quarantines.
Okay, sure. Uh, there was eighteen districts that competed in uh girls volleyball in the fall. And the rest of them uh districts pushed it uh to this fall too, with the hopes that we could do it in fall too. The, the, the sports committee did come up with what they called a COVID line, which was a line that was placed three feet on either side of the net. Creating a six-foot barrier between uh, between players, three feet on one side, three feet on the other side. And what they found, uh, the, the officials, I spoke with the commissioner of officials recently, as well as our D C L, uh, D C L liaison to the volleyball uh committee. And what they found was they, they actually uh eliminated that line about halfway through the fall season. They found as though it just was not achieving the goal that they thought. The, because of the placement of the uh, of the referee in a volleyball match is above the net and has the best view of the net in that. That area on the court. What they ended up doing was they had a heightened sense of awareness from that area and every time. A player got into that area where any contact was made with the net, with the arm, uh, body, hands, an immediate whistle was blown. And what that did was that just increased the flow of the game. It didn't seem, it seemed like a good idea on paper. When I first heard it, uh, I thought it was, wow, this is a great idea. Uh, and speaking to them, it just did not achieve the goal that they wanted. They didn't feel as though it really uh. Added any value to the safety. And uh, they eliminated that. So for the fall-two season, that quote-unquote COVID line was not in the modifications. But in speaking with that commissioner of officials, uh, that was one of their heightened sense of awareness areas on the court where they would uh. Blow whistles if there was any fouls. In fact, I met with the, with the varsity coach today and we talked about that exact thing. The big thing on the volleyball is really sanitizing the ball between every set. Making sure that there's plenty of balls available. So every time a new uh, a new point is done, they introduce a new ball into play. The socially distant aspect of on the benches, we're actually not going to use the traditional chairs that we would use. In a volleyball match for the bench seating, for, for the chair seating, excuse me. What we actually are doing is we're actually numbering the bleachers. We're pulling the bleachers out. Every other row of bleachers is going to have numbers one through fifteen. So basically the first row will have four seats. Then the next row is, is skipped. The following row will be five through eight and so forth. And they're kind of zigzagged, so they're all socially distant. And whatever player is assigned to that seat, that will be their seat for the entire game. When they enter and exit the uh, you know, the court. So they, they will never be on or sitting down in there where someone else was. Uh, I thought that was a great change they made is again, they're finding that. This transmission is not happening on the field of play. It's more making sure that we are following through with the social distancing uh. Measures during, while the kids are not playing. And uh, which is the reason for the football lines, the spreading out of that, the amount of people on the field, the bench or bleacher seating for, for volleyball, et cetera.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, Alicia.
So I want to bring us back to the conversation of sports versus academics. And I have a problem with this being discussed as a binary decision because this is not a binary decision. Flipping the switch on one does not necessarily flip the switch on another. I understand that they are all interrelated. But speaking as someone who has been in the vast majority of our buildings over the last couple of weeks, I know that every time I'm talking to an administrator, we're talking about how can we get kids back in the building more? We also hear a lot about, we need to reopen our schools. Our schools are not closed. They are open. We are just in hybrid. What we're talking about is increasing time on learning. And I think we can do both things at the same time, especially since we are approaching the phase where our administrator, sorry, not our administrators. Our staff will be getting vaccinated. And if we're going to have those conversations, we need to be talking about reopening in all places. So. I'm sort of of the same mind as Chris here when I say, I want to see a pledge signed that says you will not be in. COVID compromised situations if you are going to continue doing this thing. This is a privilege that you get to do it and in order to do so, you will adhere to these rules. And at the same time, I would also like to start having conversations about our other activities. That some of the activities that have not been able to be held, possibly at the middle school level as well, because I know the middle school has been, for the most part, shut down activity-wise. These are not binary conversations. We can talk about all of the places where we can start increasing time on learning, time in the buildings, face-to-face time for students. So I'm inclined, because we are in a different position, to go forward with this, but I think following the, the guidelines is important. Adhering to the code of conduct is important and being very clear with parents and students and staff that we are starting to have these conversations. About more time in the building, more time on learning, more face-to-face, that this is not, one is not happening in a vacuum. They are happening at the same time.
Um, other questions or comments from the committee? I will, I will readily acknowledge this, this is a, this is a difficult one. Um, reasonable minds can disagree on this one. I, I myself, I feel like I'm struggling with this one. Um, it, it was different, it did feel different in December. When there was more alignment and there was more concern about, about a surge at that time and what potential impacts that would have. I know we've weathered that surge now. Volleyball is indoors. That's an increased risk. Football and cheer are close contact. That, that's a higher risk. You know, the, these are, these are all questions of relative risk and I think COVID committee. You know, felt that tension and, and correctly observed that this is all a question of relative risk and what. What types of risk is the school system, you know, willing to entertain? So um, this one's not easy. Any, anyone on the committee have remaining questions um before we take a vote? Um, seeing none, um, I, I guess I will throw this back to Chris who made it an initial kind of comment on. You know, a student contract or something like that. Is, is that something that, that you would want to make part of the motion that? A motion to say, I mean, I don't want to write the motion, um, I'm kind of throwing it to you to ask if you'd want to incorporate this officially. To say that you'd accept the recommendation of the superintendent in conjunction with creation of a student contract, something of that sort? Or is that just a recommendation you would want to make without making it part of the motion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm torn. Part of me says, yeah, I, 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 let me put it this way. I definitely want that to be a requirement. As to whether we dictate that or we uh support our administrators um. Requiring that, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to overstep in putting that in there. If, if they feel like. That's the right thing to do, it'd be good to hear that now and, and, you know, we don't have to put that in motion.
Yeah, I, I do think that's uh an excellent suggestion. What I'd, I'd like to do is just check out. Have a quick conversation with our attorney to make sure that doesn't infringe on that person's civil liberties and so, but I think it's an excellent suggestion. I would prefer to see it independent from the uh, from the main motion.
And, and, and I would say too, I think Jeff is in a much better position with his relationship with the coaches and the like. Because they may, it, it might even be specific to the sport, you know, uh, but, so I would say defer it. Jeff and Jim have heard us today, you know, that the vast majority of us who were interested in this all said yes to some type of contract.
Um, I'm sorry if I missed this hand earlier. Do we have a student comment, Hannah?
Yeah, um, I, uh, a note to the contract. I think students would definitely be on board with signing something saying they will follow the guidelines. I know. I play through sports, so I've been through the fall and the winter season so far and Mr. Bunyan's done a great job of. Having us go through the guidelines. And Mr. Bunyan's done a great job of having us go through the guidelines and being on the sidelines, social distancing. And I know that was something that was also brought up at the November, December meeting about winter sports and mentioned by a few of the captains. So I think students would definitely be willing to agree to that if it means they could play.
Thank you, Hannah.
Gloria, we have a couple raised hands. I can't see in the air table if people have requested to speak, but we do have some raised hands and I don't know if they're actually wanting to speak or if it was a misfire.
Yeah, I appreciate the recognition. The superintendent and I discussed this in advance, given the difficulties about the discussion in the at our last meeting, we did decide in advance of this meeting that we wouldn't be taking public comment from the floor tonight. It was done last time, truly out of an abundance of trying to be fair to everyone and try to let every sport speak. But it also became a very emotional evening and that was incredibly difficult on our students. So the superintendent and I did decide in advance, we just, we wouldn't be taking public comment during this meeting. So with all due respect to those that have hands up, and my apologies to them. Any other comments or does someone want to make a motion on the floor?
I'll move.
Chris, you go.
Okay, I'll move to approve the superintendent's recommendation of moving forward with fall to sports.
And I will second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing nobody waving at me, I'll call for the vote. Avery?
Nay.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I would also be a nay with all due respect. But the motion does pass by a vote of five to two. And we wish you all a good season. Vote is taken and we support you going forward regardless of the vote. And, and please have a safe season and best to all of you and our student athletes.
Thank you for your support, everyone. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your thoughtful questions.
Thank you for the patience with answering all of them. That is definitely appreciated. The next, the next topic on our agenda is a resolution in support of expedited COVID-19 vaccinations for pre-K to 12 educators. I'm going to do something non-traditional and I'm actually going to turn the meeting over to my vice chair, Alicia, because I'm having a sound distortion. And unfortunately, through most of the sports discussion, many of you sounded like robots to me. So I'm going to try and log off the meeting and log back in. Alicia, I will pass the torch to you to discuss this. And I believe Chris was going to present the resolution. But I'm just going to log back up and log back in and hope you don't sound like robots. I'll be right back, everybody.
Well, I can't promise that I won't sound like a robot because that happens sometimes. But Chris, go ahead and present the motion for us if you will.
Okay, let me actually pull it up. If I can find it. Okay. So the impetus behind this was the knowledge that as we talked about in the last discussion, there is the desire to get more time in schools for our students. And a key component of that is making sure that our, our staff, our teachers are safe. And vaccinations are a key part to ensuring that. And we know that they are, that there were some shuffling in the governor's priorities on vaccinations. We know that teachers are coming soon, but we felt we wanted to make our voice heard on how important and how critical it is that they be prioritized. And that our teachers and our other critical school staff are vaccinated as soon as possible. So that's, that's the story behind this resolution. It is asking the state essentially, including the governor, the Department of Public Health, to prioritize teachers as much as, as much as possible so that they are vaccinated as soon as possible. Again, to the end of getting our students more fully in school. I don't know if anyone has other comments to add or questions. I'm sharing the screen. I'll kind of scroll through. So folks at home, if they want to read this, can.
So I think Gloria may have returned, but in the meantime, are there any questions from the committee? I'm trying to see if I see any of your hands. Nope, I don't see any hands. Thank you again to Chris for working on this. I know that there were several other districts who had started to put together resolutions, but that there wasn't a central resolution from the MASC. And as you can see on Chris's screen here, it does say that we're encouraging the MASC to also get on board with encouraging our legislators to make sure that our school staff is at the forefront of the vaccination stages. So seeing no questions, then I think we're probably ready for a motion on this. Do I have a motion from the floor?
I'll go ahead and do that. I will move to adopt this resolution.
Second, and I'm back, so I can second.
All right, if you're back, you can go and do the roll call then. But all right, is there any further discussion before the roll call?
I guess I would just say, if this passes, we will, as the resolution says, we will, Gloria will sign as chair and we'll transmit this to the appropriate bodies and people.
Yeah, I know the idea of this resolution came up last time. I don't know if this was discussed while I was logging back off and on, and now you no longer sound like robots. But thank you, Avery, for bringing the idea of this resolution to the committee's attention. And thank you, Chris, for helping implement it and put it into specific wording on behalf of our committee. I'm happy to support this in support of our educators and moving them further up the priority list so that they can feel safe. And so that is one less obstacle in, in the process of getting our kids back in the classroom more frequently. So happy to advocate on their behalf with our state legislators and hoping other school committees join us in doing so. So that said, I believe vote and second were both on the floor. Alicia?
Yes, they were.
Thank you for the pinch hit. I'm so happy. None of you sound like robots. Vote is to Avery.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye, and that would be unanimous. I will happily sign and forward that as agreed. Next topic on our agenda is the grant procedure manual. Ingrid?
Oh, hopefully this is. This is a document that we need to remain compliant in order to receive and process our grants. And particularly this year, when we received such large federal grants with the CARES funds, it's really just important that we have this document. It outlines our procedures. It follows the guidance from the state and the federal government. And I look for your approval, please.
Questions from the committee? Alicia?
Ingrid, my only, thank you for all of this work. My only question would be, is there anything substantially different from what we already do as a process?
No, it just documented the process. We needed to document it in a in this.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Chris?
I thought it looked great and I will move to approve the grant procedure manual.
I think it is always fantastic when we can, you know, document our procedures and, and help keep our district in compliance with all legal and financial obligations and processes. So with that, vote is to Avery.
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Lost. Alicia?
Aye.
You all moved on me. Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And aye, that would be unanimous. Thank you, Ingrid. And thank you to the finance department for all the work on that. Thank you. Next topic on our agenda is a budget discussion. We are getting to it a little later than we had hoped. But I would, I would like to still have a budget discussion that helps kind of clarify where we are in the process to the public and moves the budget discussion forward. I know there's a meeting tomorrow night. So I don't know if Bill, you want to start us off and just clarify where we are and how tomorrow night fits into the process?
Well, we have submitted, as you know, my superintendent's budget to you. You have not approved, not approved it yet because we still have more discussion that will ensue over the next months, the two months. In that budget, as you know, I have tried to address priorities that were expressed by you in your discussions and priority goal setting in a meeting earlier this year. The strategic plan, school improvement plans, the town and school safety task force, diversity, equity and inclusion team. Also, we tried to meet the, some of the needs of the social emotional learning subcommittee of our reopening committee. So, and obviously the special education needs we have addressed also. So we have been able to do that by a realizing a salary savings that took place in this current fiscal year, in fiscal 21. As you recall, we scaled back our staff to a level more commensurate with enrollments. And that allowed our salary base to decline a fairly substantial amount. We have also used some federal IDEA grants, this is the largest special education grant we have to offset tuition along with circuit breakers. So that I was able to bring to you a budget that is about $400,000, a little over $400,000 apart from the town manager's expected appropriation. Now, the big caveat there also is that that is able to be only $400,000 apart because of the incorporation of four tier transportation. And I'm putting together a presentation for the March 1st meeting that will explain the reasons for it, some of the benefits that accrue from it. Not everyone will like it, but it does meet sleep, study, research. It does allow us also to change a little bit of the scheduling at Westwood Academy that is more in line with some of the recommendations of challenge success. So there are some certain benefits that do accrue from that. And so right now, we are waiting to see what the town manager presents tomorrow night. If there are any revenues that have not been appropriated to any budgets yet that we might be able to discuss. We are in collective bargaining with Unit A right now. So there are a lot of, a lot of issues that are still unresolved. But I will say strategically and importantly, I was able to present a budget to you that at this point in time does not involve the reduction of programs or personnel. And that stability from one year to the next is extraordinarily important to our, to our school system. So in a nutshell, that's where we are. We will see what the town manager presents tomorrow night. I've had a discussion with her as late as last Friday morning. And it was a, you know, it was a positive discussion. And we know that the town is trying to do its best for all departments, including the school system. It's just an extraordinarily difficult fiscal year. And we're trying to do our best to meet our student needs, but also recognize our fiduciary responsibility to the town. So that's, that's where we are at the present time.
Thank you very much, Bill. I'll highlight two important things that Bill said in his comments. And one is that the town manager's presentation is tomorrow night. Our board will be in joint session with FinCom and the select board for that meeting. And also that the, there has been a lot of feedback with regard to the idea of four tier busing. There were a lot of concerns voiced by the community and discussions are still ongoing and underway in terms of how four tier busing could be implemented in a way that aligns with the, the health and sleep needs of students as well as their educational needs. So those, those discussions with administration and building leadership are ongoing. And there will be more discussion about it in early March. A lot of people have asked, you know, when these decisions will be made, when it will next be discussed. We won't be discussing it at length tonight. It will be discussed at that hopefully first meeting on March 1st in early March. So please check back with us then and stay engaged for more updates along the way. The committee is certainly open to any other feedback update that, that the administration wants to provide regarding the budget. I know we had, we had a couple of, a couple of questions that we're curious about. But certainly at your option, I can start throwing out topics or you can let us know what you would plan to bring forth tonight.
Does Ingrid have a presentation that she wants to run through?
I think so.
That's kind of what.
Keri had her hand up first. You're on mute.
Thank you. I would just love to highlight a couple of points that came sort of layering through in the questions that we received from all of you. So we very much appreciate any thoughts or questions that you have so that we know exactly what we can address to the full committee during these meetings. So there was a lot of talk and conversation and questions around the additional technicians that you saw as additions to the budget for FY '22. And there's also been a lot of discussion over the past couple of years around the elementary digital learning specialists or DLSSs that unfortunately had to be cut due to financial difficulties a couple of years ago. And the technicians play a very different role than the DLSSs. The DLSSs are really teachers and their role was to help build capacity amongst our staff, classroom teachers primarily to infuse technology to make lessons more robust. So it really was the educator side of things where the technicians oversee and assist with the hardware, the devices. And at this point in time, what we've found was some of the frustrations that the elementary staff are experiencing is a lack of kind of onsite support for some of the technical difficulties that occur as we continue to rely more and more on the technology in the classrooms. And in this, this particular year outside of the classrooms as well. So the technician that you see in the budget is realizing a technician that was hired for this school year. Kurt Jeffrey is at the elementary level and it has been a phenomenal addition and is constantly going to schools, but also in the office repairing devices that are broken so that we don't have to send them out and pay money to get those fixed. And then there's another line for the technician assistants to be bumped up more in line with technician salaries. So Kurt, who I just mentioned, as well as Chris. So Kurt, who I just mentioned, as well as, um, Chris Jewell, who is at the high school, kind of overseeing the one-to-world piece, they were hired as technician assistants and, um, they really fell under direct supervision of the technicians. And they, um, have very much been on their own at this point. They no longer need the specific, ongoing assistance from the technicians and they absolutely, um, are now in line with what the other technicians are doing. So that increase is to bump them up to be more in line with what they're actually doing with a technician at the elementary and at Westford Academy. Um, so I wanted to clarify that. And then the other piece was there were some questions about enrollment at the elementary level and wondering, you know, is, is there one or two grade levels where we could reduce a particular grade level at a particular school by one teacher? And maybe, um, bumping the class average from 18 and a half to 22, which still falls within the guidelines of, um, the school committee guidelines of 22 to one at the elementary level. And one of the things that I know the superintendent is always very careful of is making those types of reductions too soon. And as the year progresses, students enroll and we continue to monitor that enrollment throughout the school year. But this year in particular, we certainly don't want to kind of bite off more than we can chew in terms of squeezing as much as possible into that ratio and even tipping over, um, the line, maybe in some cases beyond the 22. We don't want to do that because our students are coming back to school in September with less exposure to the curriculum. We are not able to move forward through the curriculum the way we typically do for obvious reasons. Additionally, we know that our students will need additional, um, social emotional support because, um, the pandemic has certainly taken a toll on many. Um, some students will not be conditioned to full days, full weeks, uh, coming back to, back to school. So having that face time with teachers and an appropriate ratio, even if it's one or two or three or four students lower than the actual ratio for now, I think would be very much in our best interest. And while I'm just on enrollment, I just want to put a plug in for kindergarten registration. On February 22nd, kindergarten registration will open online and that can be found at, on each school's website. And that kickstarts the process at that time online. Parents will be then led to sign up for in-person, um, registration by appointment and that will take place March 8th, 9th, and 10th. Um, on the 8th and the 9th, the hours will be from 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock. And then on Wednesday, March 10th, it'll be from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock. So I know that was kind of long-winded, but just wanted to be sure that, uh, people were aware of that and again, to provide the committee with some clarification.
May I, uh, pick up on something that Kerry said, Gloria, with respect to the enrollment? We do have those years that represent anomalies in terms of, um, either a much larger class in, in total or a much smaller in a particular school or grade level. Um, what I have to do is I look another year out. In other words, enrollment at, um, School X this year in grade four, maybe, um, 102 students. And I look at it and say, well, I could possibly reduce one staff member. But the following year's class could be 130 students. And so the decision sometimes I make is that this is an excellent staff member. We don't want to lose them. This is a kind of a one-year anomaly. We just have to be rehiring someone the following year. So we want to keep this great staff member in, in place. Now, that's one consideration. The other is sometimes the classes are a little bit low in various locations, schools, and grade levels because of the composition of the class. Okay? The makeup of the class and the complexity of needs. We've talked about that an awful lot over the years. So there's an awful lot that goes into enrollment analysis and why there might be an additional section in one grade uh, from one year to the next, or why there might be one or two less sections in a grade. So it's complex, but we try. I think we've done a, quite a good job over the years of balancing the numbers so that we've remained relatively consistent in a range of meeting that guideline, that elementary guideline of 22 to one.
Um, thank you. Thank you both for, for that additional information. It really does put, put some of the budget numbers into, into context. Um, any questions on that before we go on? Um, I know we also had some, some questions on, on, you know, revenue and finance pieces and also on special education. I don't know who's up next. I'm, I'm seeing an Ingrid hand, so I think, I think finance is up next.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, uh, start with revenue since we spent a lot of time talking about, um, expenses? It's nice to kind of take the step back, I think, and, and really understand where the money comes from and then, um, and in what portion. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So I tried here to just show, actually, I'm going to start, I think, this way. I'm going to start here to show. The state provides every district with, um, something called a foundation budget, which is based off our enrollment and the demographics of our students. And it breaks it out into all the function areas. Um, and that's kind of the baseline. So that's pretty much saying this U school district is the minimum you have to spend. So they take what you get for Chapter 70. And then they calculate based off that foundation, um, budget, what your town, city needs to contribute to the public schools to make up with Chapter 70, that foundation budget. So in Westford, Westford, the town is required to fund the school district, um, $38,279,511, which makes up 57% of our allocation. That's the required piece from the town. The next biggest piece is Chapter 70, which are the, you know, that's our, what we give to the state and that's the portion we give back. Uh, just over 17 million. Then, because we have a great town, they do fund above the required contribution. So we get another six and a half million, um, from our own property taxes and, and the other revenue that goes into, you know, our town funds to make up really the bulk. So that would be here kind of the gray area, the blue area, and the yellow area. And as you can see, I mean, the town contribution is roughly 48, or 67%. And then Chapter 70, the state aid, is, um, another 26%. This year, because, um, of the law that was passed November a year ago, so in 19, we got additional money from the Student Opportunity Act. And that money is added to Chapter 70. So Westford received 137,580. So that, while that comes in a state aid that is specifically called out as additional funds for this Student Opportunity Act, Kerry and Bill submitted an application to the state, like every district had to, to, uh, indicate how we would as a district spend those funds. And Westford's application was to spend those funds for, um, elementary adjustment counselors. Then you see, back to the pie, there are smaller slivers, but hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, um, our revolving funds, the bulk there are, you know, our bus fees, our kindergarten tuition fees, preschool tuition, uh, three through five music, uh, those fees offset, uh, music teacher salaries. Uh, the, uh, Bill spoke earlier about the IDEA, uh, Grant 240 from the special education grant from the federal government, where traditionally we've used that to fund salaries. Uh, we're pivoting this year and going to use it to fund, to, uh, special education tuitions. We will actually, that will free up some, some funds that don't have to go to the MTRS and allow us to spend them more directly, um, for students. School choice right now in our FY22 budget, we have $177,000 offset. Traditionally, it's been about 400,000. Um, we've used it for salaries. I think as we kind of go through the process, that's an area that we just have to look. It's going to be, school choice is one of those buckets. Do we use it in 21? Do we need it, to use it in 21 more? Can we save more for 22? And that's just as we get further along in the budget process, something that we'll be able to, we'll have to just keep an eye on. And then our favorite circuit breaker, which, um, makes up 3% of all the revenue. Uh, and then I just, in this box here on the bottom, pulled out, by the end of the year, we'll have about a million dollars of school choice funds. And like I just said, some of those funds are already allocated for the, uh, 21 budget. Budgeted, it's about close to half a million dollars, so about half of that amount. But as we get towards the end of the year is when we really, you know, like we did last year, make that decision, can we strategically, uh, reserve some of those funds for 22? And that's where, um, our Jenga bud- budgeting will come in handy. And, um, we'll have to make some decisions. So, um, I think that's why the superintendent submitted a budget that was a little lighter on school choice for this year. And granted, there's still a gap. Um, but I think it's, it's, um, better, particularly to hedge against uncertainty, to keep as much school choice available as possible. I think I hit the big ones. So, um, any questions?
Okay, I've got a, I've got a little one. It's just because it is, it's, can everybody hear me or am I robotic?
No.
Okay, all right. As long as I sound good to you. Um, um, it's, it, I know it's not a huge pushover budget, but I know it was a huge topic of discussion at town meeting, um, in recent years. How does our stormwater allocation and fee fit into our, into our budget numbers? Um, because I know obviously the schools have a lot of roof and a lot of asphalt.
Well, I, I wish I had the entire budget memorized and I'm sorry, next time. But, um, if I recall, our, our stormwater fee is about $147,000. And the town is, is been gracious about, that's, they charge us, but they give us the money. So, um, we get that stormwater money on top of, of the, kind of, allocation. So the stormwater is in the budget and then the money to pay for it is also in the town manager allocation. So, does that make sense?
Yep, yep, sure does. Just wanted, wanted to double check.
Yep, it's there.
Excellent. Um, other, um, questions from the committee? I know we're going to have more as time goes on, but I think that's really, really super helpful to see. Um, I don't know if I've ever seen the, the revenue kind of laid out in, in quite that way, um, with how it relates to the foundation budget. Um, oh, I'm sorry, Ming Chen.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm looking into the, you know, the pie chart, all of numbers. So the required, um, contribution is $38 million. I know additionally is like $6 million. But the town appropriation is $60 million. So, um, can you?
Yep. So the town gets the Chapter 70. You know, we don't get it directly. So that comes in with all state aid. That's a piece of the state aid. But that's a piece that's specifically, you know, identified for school, to be spent on the schools.
So, so, so if, if you can have me understand, the $17 million is part of the town appropriation?
Yes.
Okay. So that $17 million is not contributed by the town. It's actually, um, the state is returning our income tax back.
Right, yep.
That's based on the, um, very much on the end of the year report that, um, school finance directors, including Ingrid, uh, and Anne Marie in our office submit at the end of every fiscal year, having to do with expenditures, both, uh, direct expenditures from the school system, uh, on behalf of the school operations, and also, uh, the percentage of indirect costs from various departments that are expended, uh, for services on behalf of the public schools. For example, police and fire time, uh, plowing by the highway department. So it's a very complicated, uh, formula. Uh, and there's where it's very, uh, it's very important for us to make sure that we, uh, account for our revenues and our expenses, but also, uh, make sure our student count is, uh, is very accurate.
Yeah, the student count really, um, factors in greatly in Chapter 70. And not only the count, but the, the makeup of our students.
Right.
So it is real, it's highly critical to capture, um, you know, all pieces of, of our student body and report it. And that's when we talk about that October 1, um, number. That's what all this is based on. And, um, so, so that October number is critical. And once you submit it, that's it. It's in. And, um, so there's a lot of discussion, particularly, um, this year. And I know, um, the School Business Managers Association, and I'm pretty sure probably the Superintendent's Association, we've all been pressuring the state a little to either adjust our October 1 numbers to take into account the, um, pandemic and the number of lost students. Um, I think, you know, not only homeschooled, but, you know, in, in many, particularly cities and towns, or cities. You know, there's, there are truly kids that they, they just haven't even been able to connect with. So, um, because the funding is so tied to the student enrollment, there's a lot of pressure to say, can we go back to the, um, October 7, uh, 19, or 27, 2019, uh, enrollment? So, um, there's, there's plenty of discussion about that.
Um, other questions? Alicia?
So, uh, we did mention that tomorrow night, the town manager will present town's overall budget. And I just wanted to make sure that people understood that because we are joining the select board, um, our document manager is not where you will find those documents. If you go to the same place you get ours and select select board instead, all of Jody's documents and her presentation for tomorrow night are there. Um, if you'd like to read ahead, tomorrow's supposed to be a nice snowy afternoon. It'd be fun to sit and dig through town revenue. Um, but if you go to the same place you get our documents in the document manager and just choose select board, you'll be able to find, it's about halfway down the column, I think, of documents to download.
Okay, now we know what Alicia's doing with her snowy afternoon. Um, any, any, any other questions for Ingrid? Um, did I see a hand?
Gloria, may I just say that, uh, I'll be presenting a lot of that information, uh, at the Budget 101 session on February 22nd.
Okay.
Analysis of revenues, where our money comes from and where our money is expended.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Sounds, sounds good. Um, any, anybody else? Any other hands? Valerie?
Sorry, is this, are these questions for Ingrid or the whole budget conversation?
Um, I guess we were on Ingrid questions right now.
I don't have a question for-
Anything. I mean, we're happy to answer any questions, whoever's the most appropriate. Go for it. We'll fit it in. What is the question?
I don't have a question for Ingrid. I just wanted to make sure to add a comment before we adjourn or change the subject.
Um, well, I think we're still on budget for a while. Just shoot now. We'll, we'll wing it. Go, go for it.
Well, um, it sounds like if the meeting on the 22nd might not be a, um, kind of regular meeting, um, if it's Budget 101 or something, if this, if this is our typical meeting before March 1st, I, I just want to strongly advocate- I I just want to strongly advocate for clear communication regarding the four-tier proposal. I know we asked for our patients from families and mentioned that a proposal is still being worked on, but I'm concerned that if a proposal shows up in a meeting packet a few days before and then we're expected to vote on it at that meeting, that that doesn't give the community enough time for feedback. So I'd like to strongly ask, or not strongly, but I'd like to request that perhaps a district-wide letter goes out laying out the proposal to every family, because we know there are thousands of families that don't attend our meetings or don't constantly refresh our meeting packets. And I think this is such a sweeping change that we deserve to that the public deserves to be in communication of it.
And that's fine. What I what I had planned to do also is have some community meetings, some in with the sister schools. Have some remote meetings with with families and staff members. I'll certainly be glad to send out some communication in appropriate timeframe, but I also want to have some some meetings that we can we can talk back and forth.
Great. Looking forward to the ongoing discussion. Any other questions on stuff we've discussed up till now? And and if not, Courtney, I know there had been a couple of questions on on special education. I guess it was on on Bill's presentation slides twenty-four and twenty-five. There were a number of new things and just had a lot of specifics and technicalities. So if you could further educate us as to those needs and those additional items, I think that'd be super helpful.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. There were a couple different types of things that you don't usually see in our special education budget. And in looking at the two last items that were added on one of the slides around the special education professional development funds and the special education supplies and assessment materials. Those are two areas that I have typically paid for out of grant two forty, the IDEA federal grant. And as you've heard both Bill and Ingrid reference this evening, we are shifting our focus from how we're using that large grant and putting it towards mostly tuition. So approximately eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be used for out-of-district tuition. We are setting aside another approximate one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for significant disproportionality. And then from there, there'll be maybe a small amount of money that might be left over. It's hard to really pinpoint what that leftover amount might be, because we don't know what our overall allocation will look like. And therefore, we don't know the fifteen percent that will need to be allocated toward the significant disproportionality. So there will be some slight adjustments as we move forward. Long story short, we used to be able to take around twenty thousand dollars from that IDEA grant and put it towards things in the special education supply list as well as professional development. Knowing that we've made this shift, I did call it out in this year's local budget, and that's why you're seeing this show up. So for the past couple of years, we have been making headway in building more capacity in the district to have specialized, some of our special education teachers trained in the Orton-Gillingham reading program. Several years ago, we had our language-based program that was solely at the day school for the elementary for the three to five and then over to the Blanchard School. What we found is that when students that meet this criteria of requiring a language-based learning disability, it's not always a clean timetable. And so it might be a fourth grader, it might be a fifth grader by the time that that decision has been identified. And that makes it awfully difficult to take a student out of their three-to-five environment and just put them over to day school, because that's where our district programming is. We've also had traditionally one reading specialist throughout the district. And we continue to have that individual who is trained in Orton-Gillingham. But we definitely need more support at the elementary level. So we have, over the years, trained two other staff members in Orton-Gillingham as well as sent one of our own curriculum coordinators to the Train the Trainer program so that we are really building more capacity in our ability to train our own staff. This past year, we had intended to use the grant money that I had referred to to send to staff members to training, but due to COVID that got botched a little bit. And so now we're looking to do that again this summer. So that's where that line is showing up. Also, with our testing materials, we always have to stay updated with the latest edition. If we don't stay updated, then when we're presenting our reports, they can be considered not valid, not as reliable as the other standardized assessments. So we are always at the mercy of the testing companies as they are updating every several years. Once that does occur, we have one year's time to come into compliance. And so our Wyatt testing kit, which is what we use for the achievement testing. We do need to purchase some new kits. We did purchase two at the beginning of this year. We do require one to be at every school for our special education teachers to use, as well as two at the academy. So it is a large amount of money that needs to be invested in there, but it certainly does protect us in going forward. When parents may or may not ask for an independent educational evaluation if they're going to challenge the assessment that we did complete. So those are the two kind of funny little lines that were lingering in the at the last bit of it. There are also some positions that we did have to add this year, and those included the speech and language at point three in the occupational therapist at eight point four. We were able to add these little increments to the FTE as a result of the CARES funding. Later on, we did receive another grant from special education, and we are continuing on with those same staff members to keep us whole for the remainder of this year. We are anticipating that same need for next year. It has been a while since we made those adjustments to our related service providers. And as I'm going to speak about next, our reach population continues to grow. And these are some of our students as well as the preschool population. And this is where we want to provide as much robust therapy and education to our students at a very early age. And so we definitely need those positions to continue, and that's why I made that request moving into next year. At the Reach School, Reach School, at the Miller School, we have two Reach programs. We have our preschool program and we have the K to two program. And from year to year, we're making a decision about whether it's a pre-K combination or just a preschool combination in a one-two or however we're going to divide it up. We have excellent staff members that are very devoted to teaching and supporting our teaching assistants, our teachers and our related service providers have been absolute troopers, especially through this pandemic, where we know that these are our youngest learners who really struggle with keeping masks on and in some cases, completely incapable of staying socially distanced. So just want to give a shout out to those staff members who are working very, very hard. This year, we have a very large number of students that entered into our preschool program. We currently have thirteen students, and that is very high. In other years, those classroom sizes have been around seven, which has been a much manage much more manageable number for students who are completely nonverbal and having a difficult time with some regulation. So our numbers are high. And in addition to that, our youngest learners that joined us have not had any formalized schooling. So their early intervention services were interrupted to the same extent as our students were interrupted in March. And so in essence, they've been having, you know, Zoom therapy. And how difficult is that to pull off for a three-year-old, not even a three-year-old, a two-point-nine and a two-point-ten, a two-point-eleven-year-old child? So it's been very challenging and students came in at a much lower level with less you know, capacity to really understand what a classroom setting is about and what the expectations were. So we are in the process of actively interviewing for that position right now. And we will add on that position to get us through to the end of next year and anticipating that we're going to continue to require it into the following year. We do have a lot of movement with the population. Students move in and out. We were just notified two weeks ago that one of those students actually moved over to a neighboring community. So it's always very challenging to predict what may or may not happen, but that is the request around the Reach teacher. Also, we're looking for two new special education liaisons to join us. One at our one of the younger levels at the Robinson School and the other one at Westford Academy. The Robinson School has currently two special education teachers, opposed to our other pre-K to two schools that each have three special educators. Robin School has always traditionally been smaller. We've had a smaller population of special education students, and it has been manageable. And we are now seeing the full shift of dissolving that Miller School integrated kindergarten program in affording our students the ability to be in each of their neighborhood schools for their kindergarten experience. So the numbers have increased there. Right now, our liaisons are sitting at caseloads with twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, because we have several that are in the pipe for evaluation. And we do need to bring in another special education teacher to help out with that caseload. At the academy, I know that we spoke about overall numbers decreasing. We do have a graduating class of sixty special education students and will be welcoming seventy-nine coming in in the ninth grade. So although our overall population at the academy might be shifting, we're not feeling that in the special education department. And again, their caseload is sitting at around twenty per person, which is challenging when our goal is to certainly support students throughout their seven courses that they might be enrolled in. And definitely have the experience, the expertise, the ability to help advocate the students and make sure that they're taking the courses that both meet their needs as far as their goals and objectives and allow them that opportunity to be involved in other electives that they would like to be involved in. So that would be the request for the Westford Academy liaison. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else. We we talked about the LPN last time with one needy student who's going to require some support during transportation to the Miller School and to remain with that student throughout the day. And that would be placed in our most complex classroom with Kaylee Condon. And it'll be a great support for her as well as a support to the registered nurse that currently works at the at the Miller School. And the other LPN that is being requested is to help out with our medic medication delegation status. That is just an unfunded mandate that we don't have control over. That could change, but we are anticipating that we will will have that requirement. And I'm sure we will find out maybe in mid-March when Joan Mitchell, after she submits our application to DPH, and we do receive some feedback. So we will stay tuned on that. And I think I went through that pretty quickly. I don't know if you have any questions?
That that was super helpful to me. I I I appreciate that that additional kind of detail. Courtney, I feel like every time you talk to us about our students' needs, I learn something. So I appreciate that. And and I just don't know if it gets called out often enough, but but I think it should. That our capacity to to serve students with special challenges within our district provides just such a wealth of 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 benefits to those students and those families by able so that they can be educated and and their needs are serviced within their own community and they don't have to go out of district. And and from a financial perspective, that's that's good for for the school district and the town as a whole. So I I think it's also incredibly important for inclusion. And and I think it was great when we were able to tour some of the schools to be able to see the the preschools embedded into our our K twos. I think there was some anxiety about it about that change, because it was a big change for those families and for those those staff members. And it's just been incredibly successful. It was it was really wonderful to see some of our youngest learners. You know, at the Miller School, being active and and wearing their masks just super successfully. I was just I was so impressed by by the students and the staff who are supporting them. So so I I just think that's an important call out. And and I very much appreciate you giving us some additional understanding of of the need for these enhancements to our our budgetary needs, because they're in response to student needs. So thank you for clarifying that. Any particular questions from the the committee? I know that that just answered all the questions I had on my list. So thank you very much, Courtney. I know I know the the hour has gotten, the hour has gotten late. And I think we have gone through a lot, a lot of topics, and we've advanced kind of our understanding of of the superintendent budget proposal. Does anyone else have any burning questions or issues for tonight? Or or shall we continue the the budget discussion in a future meeting? I'm I'm not seeing anybody waving a hand, so I I think I think we can call that a successful evening. Hybrid meeting of some regular business and some budget business at the same time. Bill, any closing thoughts or updates?
Updates as in weather?
I was just wondering, curious. Other people might be curious too.
Yeah, I think I think I just checked with Chip Barrett. His latest projection is for four to six inches. With much of it coming down in in the period of time, or at least heavier precipitation in that time where the middle school and elementary schools and high school getting out certainly. So I'm going to announce and I will send out something. I'll send out an email tonight to parents, but I'll send something out on a phone call tomorrow morning. We're going to do a full remote day tomorrow. Okay, so Part A, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, Part A is in this week. So they will be learning remotely tomorrow morning and not coming to school. And so tomorrow will be a full remote day, and I will announce that, send that email out to parents and to staff right after we finish.
Okay, breaking news. You heard it here first. Any 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 other questions or shall we let Bill go go send his messages?
All right, but I just love that it's like a carrot at the end of the meeting for the thirty people who stuck around.
We should really start teasing teasing things every meeting at the beginning, right? Like and at the end.
You heard it here first.
We're going to crown the new winner.
Thank you to everybody who joined us. Everybody stay safe tomorrow. Thank you to all our administrators for the additional information. And I guess, well, we won't have another meeting until after February break, so everyone have safe and healthy and masked February break.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes. I I guess I guess so. We're so used to motioning into exec. We we actually just get to motion to adjourn adjourn tonight. How about that? Didn't we? We had a motion and a second on the floor? Vote to Avery.
Yes, good night.
Chris. Alicia?
Hi.
Ming Chen?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Valerie?
Hi.
Hi, shocking. It's unanimous. Okay. Good night, everybody. Be well.